We'll go ahead and do that. Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to defy in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under an individual liberty and justice.
Okay, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections, Dan?
None.
Ryan?
None.
Mel?
We've got a couple of adds here under the consent agenda, the A2D, the 2012 A Bond Resolution. So we discussed last time, this is a resolution, just to put that in writing. And then B1, the refills discussion and review, we're going to move that to the end of the meeting. Because I think our agenda will go pretty quick, and then we'll have that presentation right at the end of the meeting.
Entertainer motion to approve as changed.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, any questions for administration on a consent agenda? Move to approve. Thanks, Dwayne. Second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report. We have an opening on planning and zoning. So I'm going to recommend that we have Paul Johnson take that position. He's filled out an application. I've emailed him. If you don't know who Paul is, he's been coming to the council meetings on a pre-rigor basis. These guys, he's not here tonight. That surprises me. First meeting he hasn't been to in six, eight months. But Sheldon Torkelson has stepped down for personal reasons, so we'll get him replaced. And I would make that recommendation to the council if I could get a motion on that.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to thank Sheldon for his years of service on planning and zoning. Public Fund, I don't have any cards. Old Business Water Tower Place Tiff.
Okay, this is something we took a look at last time. Water Tower Place is the name for the folks up there at the water tower. And they're here tonight, the Sand folks, I believe. So they're in Access Development Tiff, actually. I'm sorry. I was there. Matt Durand here is on the ball, right on the dot. Matt, we were just going to talk about your project. This is a Tiff project over by the old school. The old historic school district here in town, a school building. EDA has taken a look at it. They reviewed it again yesterday. And they had a number of suggestions, some contingency requirements and things like that. And most of those are due to the fact that there's concerns about the ability for the project to be completely, fully completed. But otherwise, they did support the project. They felt that it would be a good project for the community. Because it needed to serve that senior housing niche, which is what they really think it should focus on. But you have items included in your packet there. You've got the project report with the pro forma, as well as the concept plan. They're looking at some different types of units, some one bedroom, I think a couple of two bedroom units, and then possibly some of the efficiency. And then Matt here is representing Paul Warschauer. I don't know if you remember Matt. He worked for us for a little while last year. He's been doing some work with Paul, and I would say, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to talk about his project a little bit, that may be the next course action.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for your time. As Tim had said, you know, we're looking at about 31 apartments, senior apartments here to renovate the existing high school. About five studio apartments, 15 of the one bedrooms, and then the balance would be the two bedrooms. Overall, it's an exciting project. Obviously, it's been in the community for a long time. And Paul's excited to come in and redevelop a community asset and really provide some housing for the community. So overall, the fit plan you have in your packet, as well as the pro forma, looking at a little bit over $9 million worth of costs. Once you figure in all of the appliances and $8.6 million in overall construction costs. And we would be looking to utilize the historical tax credits to help offset those costs. It's pretty much done and dirty. I think overall, Paul has done this in several other communities. I'm working with Paul in Owatonna as well. They have an existing high school that he's looking to do the same thing. Again, senior community housing, because that is a need in a lot of these communities. And then really look to use that historical preservation and have some of that architecture. We're working with Alex Hacker. He did the fit plan that you see in your packet there. And Alex has had a long track record with historical projects within the state as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for Matt?
I have a couple. What other projects has Paul completed?
Yeah, there's a project over in the wall, a similar program where it was an existing high school, actually three different phases. That were built in the 1920s, in the mid 1930s, and then 1950s. And so that overall whole project is listed on the historical registry. So in that case, Paul worked with a small theater group to utilize the auditorium and then have a nonprofit group do plays within there. And then they redeveloped that as well, split it through some property lines. Paul has also worked on some projects out of state. He's done some stuff in Chicago, as well as in Nebraska.
But when he was here, I asked him what projects he's completed. And he said he didn't actually complete that new wall project, that it was sold off to a different developer that ended up making a different kind of housing than he had initially proposed.
Sure. As development goes, sometimes it's a little bit of a, you go in with a process and sometimes it morphs a little bit. So in that case, Paul had proposed a certain type of housing, and so he did sell off his interest in that. So you're not wrong. I mean, he didn't take it from start to finish, but that was a project that Paul started. And then he sold that off. And that's not uncommon for some developers to come in, kind of come up with that master plan, and then find other developers that will take that to the finish line.
My concern, though, is, yes, we have a need for senior housing, and that has been sort of the group that previously owned the building. That was something that they were kind of specific, that they would like to see go in that building. My concern is with Mr. Warschauer, and I do not know the individual personally. He wasn't able to identify a single project that he has personally finished. So that was all I was trying to inquire, just to get a little bit more of a feel for his background in this area.
Sure. Yeah, in this region or in the area of redevelopment?
Redevelopment.
Okay. Yeah, and in some cases, you know, I can't speak to Paul's whole history because I've only known him for about the last year.
Sure.
And so he and I are currently working on a similar project in Owatonna. And so our proposal is to come up with a master plan and then find players, other developers, that are interested in parts of it. Right? And so from that standpoint, putting that overall concept together and bringing in individuals who can help make those pieces happen. So it's a lot of kind of the front end, getting things in line, and then having those people finish it off. So in some cases, you know, if you take start to finish, you're going to see a lot bigger profit. Sometimes you might come in, get the ball rolling, and take it for, you know, 70 cents on the dollar or less, and then move on to do another project.
Sure. And I understand that. I think my only concern is, as someone who lives in that area and has neighbors who constantly come to me asking what's going on with the building, I just want to make sure that what is proposed is what we end up with. And not something that's completely different than the initial proposal that he's putting forward. So that's kind of my sum total of my concerns.
Sure. And I think when you say something else, right, I think that reading between the lines, that is low-income housing?
No, it's not.
No? Okay.
It's high density. It's more than 31 units.
Oh, more than 31. Okay.
That's my concern.
And the neighborhood supports the 31 senior units?
Haven't had a chance to talk to anyone yet, since it's still sort of just, as you said, a formative and development phase.
Sure.
But in the past, when greater than 31 units were proposed, there was a lot of opposition to it. Concerns with on-street parking and things like that.
Sure.
I think that's a very valid concern. I think that's where councilman's coming from is, you know, knowing some of the folks over there. It's already kind of got a traffic area with Hy-Vee on the one side.
And Mayo on the other.
Increased parking, those are residential streets. So I think that super-high density is probably what their biggest concern is, really.
Yeah.
And I think that was something that was talked about a little bit at the EDA as well, just to highlight, the EDA did bring up some of these same concerns that you've got.
Okay.
Especially with the end use. I know that a couple of folks on the EDA are participants in the chair group.
Mm-hmm.
And they're very concerned, wanting to make sure, as you mentioned, that that senior component is preserved. Obviously, that's their group's goal.
Right.
And I think that, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the things we talked about was when the Tiff agreement, if it was approved, would be written up, that would be one of the caveats that we would like to write into that, is that the intended use for this is that senior folks' housing. I think that was right.
Yeah, correct.
Because we want to try and provide as many protections. So we know that the city's participant portion is smaller than, these historic tax credits are millions of dollars. But we want to take every, at least the EDA wants to take every step possible to ensure that the end product is what's been promised. So you're right on the ball with those concerns, because they definitely were talked about at length yesterday, so.
Okay. As long as they've been made aware and known.
I guess that's a good question, Matt, as I mean, we've got kind of this design here in terms of what's the timeframe. And we know that the tax credit, you know, it's kind of tied up with the state.
It is.
And that is kind of another concern that folks have said, well, is this premature? Should the city be looking to approve this now before, you know, some of these pieces are already in place? I guess, could you speak to that a little?
Yeah, for sure. We have had discussions with legislators. And so it is our understanding that the governor is going to call back a session, for a special session. And that the historical tax credits are included, the second-line item within the omnibus bill. And so it will, so this is a bonding year, and so there will be called back to put together the overall bonding bill. And this, the historical tax credit is the second item included in that. So everything, obviously, you can't really, you know, know exactly the way it's going to go. But everything that we're hearing from the legislature is that it's high on the priority list, and that it will be included in that overall omnibus bill.
So I don't know if you have an answer to this, but I heard, let's say they don't go back, they don't approve it, that the whole tax credit restoration disappears after this year, unless they can, like, it's done, done. Like, the whole program will disappear completely.
Yeah.
Is that true?
I'm not sure if it's totally, totally done, but obviously, in some cases, they try and revive things. Maybe they might be able to find funding for another year or two. But you're not wrong. It will terminate or sunset unless it gets, you know, reapproved at this session. Certainly, you know, the historical tax credits are a big part of this project. It doesn't mean that it's going to kill it. It will just, you know, mean that we'll have a little bit more of an uphill to try and find financing and funding. Paul has been working with some investors, as well as had some conversations locally with some larger groups for some funding. And so I think that there's still, I think that based on the waiting list of some of the other senior housing in town, you can show that there is a definite need. So anybody coming in as an investor knows that this isn't just some kind of new idea, that there's some validity there. And so, you know, we're still hopeful that the tax credits will come through for very, you know, we have another historical tax project as well that we're working on, so we're hopeful. And all the discussions that we've had have been positive, right? So, and I get they're politicians, right? So, you know, no offense to any of the politicians here. But the point being is that, you know, everything that we're hearing sounds like the historical tax credit. Because it is a great program, and there are a lot of buildings that would sit and not have opportunities if it weren't for some of these programs to happen.
And I think that was another point the EDA talked about is, you know, if something along these lines doesn't proceed, then you're going to continue to have the deterioration of that building. And so I know at least the EDA's perspective was there was some positives to it. If we could limit the number of units and density, and then also preserve that neighborhood characteristic. You know, one of the positives to the senior housing would mean that some of the parking might not be as big of an issue, too, because you wouldn't see as many vehicles.
And I do understand that aspect of it, and, believe me, it's a great building. I mean, it really is a pretty building, and I would like to see something done with it, and I would like to see it preserved and used. But, correct me if I'm wrong, I have another neighbor who's here as well. This has just been an ongoing concern for the many, many, many years that that building has been empty.
Yeah, I totally appreciate, if I lived in the neighborhood not knowing, you know, what's going to happen there. If the historical tax credits do go away, obviously, there isn't the need to have the level of detail that we currently have in the estimates either. Right? So there are, so what I mean is, when you apply for historical tax credits, you have to match the original historical, you know, the cornices, the windows, everything, right? If that is not available, right, we have the ability to still improve the building without having to match the historical integrity. Right? So you're still going to get a good product, right? You might have different windows that aren't necessarily historical, but they're new, they're cost-effective, they'll help the project. So, you know, it's a little bit of a trade-off when you go for those historical tax credits, because you have a high level of detail that you have to match. And not having those might allow for some fund savings, you know, to get the project moving as well.
One other question that came up was the legal status of the property. And that was something that a lot of folks were wondering, what are you hearing on that? Because there was a lawsuit, obviously, the city's not involved with this at all. But we wanted to just sort of know what kind of, where that was at.
Yeah, so it's my understanding that initially the gentleman had brought a lawsuit in the name of his company, and that was thrown out. Then he brought it as an individual. That was thrown out. And now he has since retained counsel as a company. Because in the state, if you are an entity, a legal entity, you have to have legal counsel. You can't represent yourself as a business. So it's my understanding that he has tried to bring that again. And we're hopeful that based on the track record of, you know, this being thrown out, that everything will move forward, and we're still kind of waiting to hear from them.
So the sale has not gone through? It's still a contingent?
It's still pending.
Any other questions? I would recommend that we take the EDA's recommendation that we contingently approve the Tiff request with the stipulations of the density stays where it's at, no more than 31 units, and senior housing. And there's a date of like February 23, I think is what we have in there, that has to be done by then, or they have to come back and reapply or ask again. Because it's all contingent by the credits. Everything else is out of our control. If they don't get the credits from this, then this is done. So I would recommend that we move forward with that.
So you need a motion?
I'd like a motion if anybody agrees.
I would make the motion that we move forward with all stipulations included.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ryan, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So if we can get that written up with the...
Yeah, I think, and what I'll do is, you know, so you take that as a supportive motion. Thank you, Matt, for coming and presenting. You know, staff will work at it at our level, and we'll bring that back to council to review and make sure that you're all comfortable with the actual, you know, criteria that we've placed in there, that it meets what you felt was appropriate.
Perfect.
Just so we're comfortable on everything.
Thank you.
And it's our hope, too, with that fit plan, you know, to get those neighborhood, you know, to maybe do an open house or to do something along the lines. Maybe some door knocking, you know, just to kind of let people know. Sometimes when you don't know what you don't know, there's a level of anxiety, right? And so if we can, and our hope, too, is, you know, to maybe get some of these floor plans to look what an elevation of a studio might look like, or to have some more of that detail, so that, you know, pictures worth a thousand words. And we can have some of that information and do an open house, maybe in the neighborhood, or, you know, some, maybe do some door knocking, or something along those lines to let people know, so that we can communicate.
Very good idea, because we have, as a neighborhood, in the past, sort of been left out.
Yeah.
And that did, I think, engender some very negative, negative feelings.
Sure. Yeah, I think it makes sense, you know, we want to be a good neighbor to the existing neighbors who have been there forever, or for a long time. And so I know that this is an important project for the community, and we'd like to do it right.
Perfect. Thanks, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Old Business Number Two, Access Development Tiff. That is in your packet as well.
Sure, we've got some other guests here tonight, too, Mr. Mayor. The EDA also reviewed this project yesterday. There are a number of questions similar to the first. This is a little bit different. It's not a historic tax credit project. It'd be not a redevelopment Tiff, but it'd be a housing Tiff. And you can see in your packet, the items that they're requesting, there's a support letter here. They're requesting a number of items that we would place in that support letter, that we would... I will say, last year, the council did authorize a similar request letter. There are a few things that have changed in there in terms of some of the waiving of some of the assessments and things like that. But I would see if they would want to speak to their project, maybe, and we'll take questions. Can we get your name for the...
Yeah, absolutely. Megan Carr with Sand Development. Thank you for having me here this evening, and thanks for considering our request. A little bit, I know it wasn't, we weren't able to come to the previous council meeting, but we've been to the EDA twice now. So I don't know, I guess I'll give you a little bit of background on low-income housing tax credits. And if it's, if you guys know all of this, just look at me and say, okay, you can stop. But basically, it's a competitive process that's allocated through the state of Minnesota, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. And it's all about points. And every project throughout the state is ranked according to the priorities that Minnesota Housing has designated for the low-income housing tax credits. Those are allocated from HUD to every state. So it's limited dollars that are allocated, and they have to prioritize. Greater Men competes against Greater Men projects, and Metro competes against Metro. But ultimately, they all kind of compete against each other. There's different set of, I guess, percentages allocated to Greater Men. But this project would compete with Rochester, with St. Cloud, Mankato, Duluth, et cetera, so larger cities outside of the metro. And with that, we go through the scoring, and local participation is a huge component of how you can get additional points to potentially be selected. And so when we went through this proposal with Robert Harris, we really looked at how can we get the most points with a reasonable request, what we believe to be reasonable. So that's how we came up with this criteria, our request before you. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the project. A little bit, just quickly, a little bit about us. We've been developing tax credits since 1995, low-income housing tax credits since 1995. We have about 40 communities right now that are either under construction or complete. And of those, we've only sold one project during that time that has low-income housing tax credits. So we plan to hold our buildings long-term, which in this case, for current buildings, that's 40 to 50 years. So, you know, I don't know that I'll be still working in 40 to 50 years. I doubt it. But, you know, we do plan to hold them long-term and reinvest in the projects. We've rehabbed numerous projects. We try to do one to two of our projects every single year if we're able to figure out ways to finance them, which means we go in and sometimes it's a light rehab, where we might do exterior, interior, or as the unit turns, change carpet, do energy-efficient upgrades. We worked on a couple of buildings where we changed out all of the light fixtures, appliances, to more energy-efficient ones. We utilized an energy rebate program for that. So we're always looking at additional ways to make our buildings, you know, stand the test of time. And when we build our projects, that's the one thing we look at. You know, it costs is certainly a factor, especially in today's market. But we try to balance, like, what is, you know, the benefit of what X, Y, Z over the life of the project. So you'll see in our buildings, we utilize 30-year shingles when it's a pitch rough, hardy board or LP siding throughout the outside. Try to do some masonry if we can. The building will be, will utilize Minnesota, excuse me, enterprise green communities criteria, so it'll be a pretty efficient building, meeting home energy, what's her standard, rating system, hers. So numerous of the units will be blowtorched and tested and confirm that they meet the hers requirement. And usually, that's, I think we have to score under like 55 or 60 for points. And a lot of our units score like in the low 40s. We've even had some scores low as 30, high 30s. So you want, the lower you get, the closer you are to a net zero building, basically. So, yeah, that's a little bit about us, a little bit about the project. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
One question that you may not be able to answer, but I know that we've had two groups, at least in the past, come in and try to do these kinds of credits in Kessin and get denied both times. What's changed?
Yeah, so we actually did apply last year. That was our group, although I wasn't here, so you may not recognize my, you probably don't recognize my face.
This was actually years ago.
Oh, okay, okay.
Two years ago.
Okay. Yeah, so one of the things that we'll be incorporating in, so last year, we were not selected. We went back to Minnesota Housing and had a conference with them to go over some of the areas for improvement. And one of the things that they indicated is that we really need to do more supportive housing units. So what that means is, four of the units in the building, and I apologize, I wasn't trying to hide this, it just didn't occur to me, but four of the units will be high-priority homeless, which means that that would be 12 months of continuous homelessness for an individual, or four episodes of homelessness within the last three years. So you might be thinking to yourself, well, we don't have homeless individuals in Kessin. Maybe not, maybe, you know. But the reality is, Greater Men homelessness isn't necessarily someone standing on the street corner. It's somebody couch hopping, or living with relatives, or being in a hotel, and then moving to relatives, or moving to a friend. And that's very common, and that does qualify as homelessness. And we would work with a service provider to ensure that they are successful. We're trying to secure a service provider right now. We have one out of the Twin Cities who's willing to come down here, but we're trying to find someone local. So we're in the process of having those phone calls. And the one group that we are working with Min Prairie to connect with, they are very interested. We just haven't been able to connect on the phone with them yet. So we're working on that right now. And then we also plan to incorporate five units that are set aside for people with disabilities. So that could be physical or mental disability, and those units would work with Min Prairie. They're likely individuals that they are already serving that would provide housing. So the goal of people with disabilities is to allow counties or county agencies to find housing for the individuals they're serving. It's very difficult to find housing that works for people with disabilities because of physical or mental challenges. And so Minnesota Housing has prioritized that, and both of those categories get points. So county agencies have said, hey, we have problems with this. So Minnesota Housing then allocates points and says, hey, if you incorporate these, we'll give you points to boost your project. So those are some of the things we're doing. We also are working with SEMCRA, I think that's the acronym, correct acronym, to secure rental assistance for all nine of those units. So that's also would get additional points. And then we are working with, we, so we are a women business, or a women business, majority-owned business. And so that also gets additional points. There's, we would be looking to, this is large family housing, so 75% of the units will be two, three, and four bedrooms. And so one of the things that, is another thing they would like us to do is talk, identify a group that you will be serving in this building, and have conversations with those individuals. And so we plan to set up meetings with another Greater Men project that we just opened with the large families, and ask them like what they would like to see in the next building, so we can incorporate those ideas into Kessin. So, but those are just some of the areas that we are hoping to score in this upcoming application. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for the information. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
So we've got two things in front of us here. The, one is the letter of support. And we viewed both these things at the last meeting to kick back to EDA. So the recommendation media was to support the letter of support to approve that. Any questions on that letter? And the requests that they have are also part of the points they're trying to secure as far as the city's participation and the bullet points at the bottom there, the sale price of the land and that. So any questions on the letter? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Letter is signed.
And there's a resolution also.
Yep. And we also have the resolution that we saw last time supporting the tax increment financing for this project. Any questions on that? The numbers are the same as we saw at the meeting two weeks ago.
One thing to note would be that sunset that you mentioned for the previous project, too.
Correct.
They had that in February 28, 23.
Yep. Yeah, so if they don't get the credits, then if we don't have that ironed out by the end of next February, then we would start over with the process and the request. Yep.
Can I ask a question? I apologize. I just, relaxing, does the motion include the extension of the option agreement for the land?
Well, it wasn't something we had in there, but I think it probably...
I think it's implied with that, yeah, to February.
Sorry, I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure for you guys. If we can do the option agreement for a 12-month extension, I don't remember the exact date, but I feel like that would put us into summer of 2023. It's just an option.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I think maybe we'd go with the date that we have in the resolution there, February 28. Because it seems like to me that would be when they already sort of said that it would reset to me. I guess that'd be kind of...
When would you know about the credits for this application?
Hopefully, the latest we've found out is the end of January. So, and I guess if we did that, we would just, I don't know that we'd be ready, like, to enter into a purchase agreement immediately, because we have 30 days to accept the reservation. So if you want to do February, that's fine, the 28th, and then we can just come back, you know, in February and just say, hey, you know, we need another, you know, 60 days or something.
That would, that would...
That would be fine.
Okay.
I don't think that would be a problem to have the option agreement, no.
Okay.
Yeah, because we can always revisit it.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I was just...
Nope, that's fine. Thanks for the clarification. Appreciate it. Any questions on the resolution?
So just to, obviously, we'll include that option to the 28th of February as well.
Correct. Correct. Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming. Number three, Dodge County Housing Study.
This is mostly informational, I know you've probably seen it before, but it's just to basically highlight some of the needs, if you, you know, decide to wade through it, and it is a lengthy document, and it'll be needing some updating, but I was working with a potential another developer for this subdivision, and I read through it with them, and I found that it's fascinating, the eastern half of the county, the number of units that are actually projecting, and I think that number has only grown in the, you know, the two years that it's, you know, been in existence, the sub, I think they were already looking at 312 units. So some people are saying, well, you know, oh, we can support these units. I think from the basis of the Max Steel study, it seems that there's definitely demand in excess of the number of units that we're looking at, you know, because I don't want us to overbuild units, obviously, I don't think we want that, but I think that there's quite a bit of demand, especially in the eastern half of Dodge County, based on the study. So just wanted to highlight that for you, if you have any questions about it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on housing study? Okay. On to number four, the meter polling, we visited the last meeting about this too, and you're going to come up with some costs.
Well, basically, the, we went back and we talked to Jared and talked with Nancy a little bit, and you've got a couple documents there. Nancy went and actually took a look at the cost, the real costs of extending the service out over that length of period of time. Based on our union contracts, we have a two-hour callback. So if somebody gets called in, they get paid for two hours. So it doesn't really make a ton of sense for us to say, okay, we're going to charge you X. When we're paying someone for two hours, it's going to cost more than that amount. I mean, just financially, it doesn't make sense. So the recommendation from, I think, the Finance Department, I agree, was to go with $200 if we were to extend this. Speaking with Jared, there's a couple different ways this could work. Likely what we would do is require the receipt to be in hand, so someone would need to have a receipt, for example, on their phone, where they could say, yes, it's paid. You know, one thing I'm not very comfortable with is having staff take money in the field. Now, some of the staff feel like that might be okay, I'm not sure if that's my preference, but, you know, there are ways that, that it possibly could work if we had, you know, different things involved. We do think the number of people that are going to do this is very limited. It's a very small number, probably less than a handful a year, because of, most folks are going to say, well, you know, I'll wait till the morning, because it's quite a bit less expensive. But, I mean, after we kicked it around, we thought it's possibly worth offering, with a higher cost and limiting people to make sure they just have a receipt and not taking cash in the field. And with that, we recommend an approval of extending the possibility of reconnecting people after the 5 o'clock hour.
Is there a plan to include this information in like a packet?
Absolutely. We'll be making updates, well, in fact, we'll be making updates to the electric packet that was approved at the last council meeting, the electric rules, as well as providing that on their sheet they get when they, when they sign up for utility.
Because certainly, if we increase that to $200, I mean, that in itself is going to be a disincentive, but are we adding insult to injury that where nothing gets paid? And they just don't have power.
Well, I think what we felt was, most folks would reconnect in the morning if they chose to do this.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really in a case where somebody really, really wants to have their power on, and they've chosen not to pay. You know, obviously, Cassie and the utility billing department does everything they can.
Yeah.
She manages dozens of payment plans every month to keep folks on, whether it's cold weather rule or it's in the summer, and our goal is to try and keep people's power on. But we also find that when someone gets so far behind, you know, when they're $1,000 behind their bill.
Right.
You know, it's either going to be a landlord who's going to get stuck, and that's going to be something we have to deal with, or it's going to be somebody who's going to have a lien on their wages, because that goes to the wage recapture program of the state. And, I mean, it's much better for them just to set up a plan with us. So we don't think it's going to use a lot, but the election department's asked for it, so that's kind of why we're talking about it. I think we'll prob, we'll most likely add to the fee schedule as well.
Probably the fee schedule.
Yeah, we'll add to the fee schedule as, so we may bring that back, we just wanted to let you know kind of what the thought was behind it.
Okay. So you'd have two different fee schedules in there, the $50 and the $200.
That's right. Based on the time that they would be reconnected, yep.
So it'll be clear so they understood.
Absolutely.
If we have to call somebody back in, it's two. And I see this being used, maybe not ever in a year, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to update the fee schedule, or you want to actually?
Yeah, I can update the fee schedule, if the council's agreeable, we'll add that to the fee schedule as a, as an ordinance change, and then we'll have that for you at the next, probably our next meeting. Is that okay, Linda?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Onto new business, Small Cities Development Program, this is a letter.
Sure. This is a request from Karen Ducharme. She is requesting, well, you can read her email there, she is requesting that this extension of the grant be authorized until 9:30, '23. So it's relatively straightforward. I've got a copy of it, thanks Nancy for providing that. But I wanted to bring it to you, just so you're aware of the numbers and the current budget on the second page, you can see the numbers where they're talking, what they're looking at. We're asking you, along with the SEMCRA folks, to extend that to October of, September, end of September of '23.
Yeah, I don't see why we wouldn't do that, so. Any questions on that? It's a no, I guess, entertain a motion.
Make that motion to approve.
Thanks, Dwayne, do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Admin report.
You've got my report in the packet there, a couple things. Moving forward, that Vale property, which we've had the, at least one of the developers here tonight, I know Brandon may be talking about that a little bit more, we are kind of trying to accelerate that, just because of the procurement times. We're looking at that development possibly even moving forward next month, so we'd like to try and get some approval. And like I said, I'll let Brandon talk about that, but the planning and zoning will be looking at the preliminary plat next week, so that'll be kind of exciting for them to see and see if they've got feedback for us. A lot of staff time has gone into the development there, but we have four two- to three-acre lots, and the Hamilton Real Estate folks have signed a purchase agreement for the first lot, and they have an option on the second lot, and the council has additionally granted an option on a third lot to the folks from, from sand companies. We have a fourth lot, which we'll continue to work on, you know, trying to get that sold as well. We're only looking at building kind of the first phase of this, so we don't, you know, cost-wise, it may have made, it makes more sense to build the whole project cost-wise, but it also is a much larger expense without a lot that's actually bought yet. If I knew I had an end user for that last fourth lot, I would extend it at its time, but we're just trying to be physically conservative about the way we approach it. So we will have access for two or three lots already without extending that, that third section. So, very interesting stuff, like I said, you may have seen City Hall, we, we're going with the bare bones, look, they're going to, they're going to put some landscaping into, really needed, thanks to the Park and Rec Department mostly for getting on that, and we want to keep this building in place. 57 Project is moving forward. I talked to Charlie, and, you know, he said, you know, working with MinDOT is a unique experience. You know, the rules that they have for digging things up, burying them, packing them back down, and then digging them up again the next day is, it's kind of fascinating. But, you know, we're hoping for a good end product. I haven't really heard a lot from residents, so last week, we did have some, some businesses that had short water shut off, and it didn't seem like it was a huge impact, and the full ness of time, their water was only off for about an hour. So it, you know, we're trying to deal with those challenges that come forward, but good communication is what I want to stress for folks, and that's what we're trying to do. And we're working with the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that the message that goes out is accurate and that sort of thing. So, other than that, I just want to highlight, I will be out next week for the American Power Association Conference, and then on vacation for two days, so I will be out of the office next week.
Okay, thank you. And what's the grant acceptance?
Yes. All right. What?
I have a two here, there's nothing in the packet that I have. Grant acceptance.
Okay. I don't have that on my agenda. So we'll skip it.
Okay. There's nothing in the packet. Engineers report. Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, we never want to skip grants, do we? Anyway, Vale subdivision, a couple items tonight, Mr. Ribisch already kind of went through big picture, but I'll touch on those and obviously answer any questions that you may have, so.
You go. All it was, was the USDA, we got our first phase approval for the USDA revolving a lot of fund grants. Sorry, missed that, but yes, that is in the packet there, so, there you go.
Great.
Right, there you go.
Vale subdivision, a couple items there, I'll just go through them quickly each individually, and then looking for consideration of resolution to approve plan and advertise the construction project. So as Tim alluded to, we've been working with some development in the area, what we're ultimately trying to do here is go out for bid, as we're still developing and going through the planning and zoning process, so we can cut down some of our time, because the contractor has a very short timeline. They're ultimately looking at starting construction this summer, into fall, likely building, the building through all winter, and then coming in in the spring and paving, so we want to kind of mimic that schedule. So we're looking at going out for bid as soon as we can here, so we can get a contractor on board at a later date, start installing a lot of our infrastructure this winter, and then paving next spring right away to kind of match their schedule. So, knock on wood, we're opening up kind of our road at the same time as they're opening up the apartments. So that's what we have before you. Tim talked a little on the project schedule. Monday, the preliminary plat and the PUD that's in your packet is going to go to planning and zoning, and that likely, that recommendation, assuming approval, would be at the June 22nd, your next council meeting for consideration to approve that. And then the schedule that we have proposed, if we proceed with the advertisement for the project is July 7th, we would receive bids for the project. Assuming the planning and zoning and the council has approved the preliminary plat and PUD, we'd get the July 12th meeting to potentially award this construction project and prove the final plat. And as you guys know, you are the developers, so we are doing the plating, so we kind of lockstep with the two schedules between the Hamilton project and this project. So that's the big picture project. Again, we're looking at going out for bids to kind of expedite that, I didn't want to wait to go out to bids till July, do the procurement problems, I'm not sure we'd get anything in the ground, I'm still worried going out today for bids with getting materials to get our infrastructure in the ground. So that's, the request for council action, as I'll quickly go through the items, we have a preliminary plat, there's a document that, again, this will be going to planning and zoning on Monday, this is the Vale property that the city bought. To the north is to the left of the sheet, on the right-hand side is Highway 14, kind of left, or the middle there is the railroad tracks. You can see we kind of broken the parcel up into three large parcels. The right side or the south side is the park parcel that we've talked about, we've done some park planning for that parcel, just north of Highway 14 and south of Maston Creek. Kind of the center parcel where Maston Creek is, that's going to be reserved for a flood corridor that goes through there, as we experienced in 2019, that whole corridor in there was full of water, so obviously we want to keep our park and our apartments out of that area. And kind of the busy area there, right off of, just immediately south and west of our water tower, just south of railroad tracks, is kind of the apartment complex there. In yellow is the Hamilton first phase. The second yellow farther to the west or to the downside of the sheet is the option for the Hamilton group. And then to the north, between the railroad tracks and our third street, would be the sand parcel that was discussed tonight, and then kind of off the end of the cul-de-sac would be a potential fourth parcel to be sold. Jumping into the next document, the PUD kind of zooms in there, that has the red box there. The construction project that we're considering tonight includes that first section, so we come off of Old 14 or County 34, Richardson Memorial Parkway, come off of the Little Stub Street, and then stub a road going to the west to open up the first phase of that multifamily development there. We're not going to consider, or at least as part of this project at this point, consider building out the full cul-de-sac, as we discussed with the, with the cost there and not knowing the future development there, so that's going to be kind of, in limbo, we got a hypothetical development here with three projects, we think we're heading in the right direction, but that may change as future plating is, as stuff kind of comes in. So, in dark red is what the construction plan shows, it's a short water and sewer extension to serve that property, a very small amount of storm sewer, and then ultimately building a road, this is going to be a little bit of a narrow road, with the idea that this is a little bit unique, you know, it's not a through street, it's almost a private street, where it's going to be a public street, serving four properties, so we're not proposing any parking along there. And then we have a trail along the south side of the road that ultimately comes out to our trail system along County 34 there and ties in our park system. So it's going to be a dense development, but we're also having those pet facilities to get the people to the parks and the other open spaces that we have. Continuation to the south is not proposed as part of this project yet, we do show that we're extending to the south, eventually over Maston Creek into that parkland, I think that's going to be likely a future project for the city, after we look at some funding to open up that parkland. So that's been planned, but not excluded as part of the project that we're looking at tonight. Again, it's just that dark little red box that we're looking at. And then the dashed little red box there is the first phase of the Hamilton development, assuming, again, everything goes throughout P and Z. That's the, the PUD document, in addition to that, we have the full construction plans. I think I've pretty well explained what the construction project was, or is, being proposed. We have reviewed this with staff, they go over some of the details and how we serve everything, so it's been staff-reviewed, and we're ready to go out to bid if we approve things tonight. That's the construction plans, I'm going to keep going. The next item is the advertisement for bids, that basically puts things in motion to advertise for the public bidding process. We're not bound by anything, we'll be back again at a later meeting to consider bids, so if things don't come all right, or things change, obviously, we'll, we'll adapt or pull the project or not award the project at that July 12th meeting. That's the resolution, or, excuse me, that's the advertisement. And lastly, is the resolution to approve the plans, and then ultimately order the advertisement of the bids to bid on July 7th, and then bring it back to the July 12th council meeting. So I'll pause there, that's kind of my spiel of what we got in front of you tonight, happy to answer any questions that you may have. Questions for Brandon?
It's good to move forward, thank you. So then we've got a resolution before us, and this is basically contingent upon planning and zoning approving it back to us, so if planning and zoning would go a different direction, this would be null and void. So I'll make the motion to approve the resolution, approving the plan, specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brandon.
Couple really quick ones, I'll plan on attending planning and zoning, if there's any questions on this plan, we'll be happy to answer them at P and Z on Monday, in the next council meeting, the 22nd, remember, we have the public hearing for the 57 assessment, so that'll be on the docket for the 22nd.
That gone out already?
Yep, out the door and in the paper, so. Thank you very much. The K personnel promote police officers at Kessin to full-time and step increase to grade 10, step to 29, 47 an hour.
Do you want to talk about it?
Anything you have specific?
Well, it's straightforward, we Personnel Committee recommended filling that full-time position with, with one of our officers having left, and this does mean that we're out of part-time officers.
Correct.
Exactly, so I think it's definitely been a challenge for them with staffing, so I appreciate all the efforts that our police department does.
Absolutely. Any questions for the chief on that? Right, entertain a motion to approve. Thanks, Dwayne, do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. It's good competition we got going on down there. And we're going to, that brings us to the end. Any questions on correspondence or any comments about correspondence? Anybody?
Just one other thing I wanted to highlight that you probably got from the school superintendent today. I know it went out to most of the folks who have emails with the school related to them. There are some issues with the SRO position that the EMS committee has discussed a little bit, and that's going to be going back and forth. But just wanted you to know that that's an issue that's pending, and the superintendent's kind of addressed it in a letter he sent out to the community. So I'm sure we'll get feedback. I'm sure the folks who've been on social media have got feedback already. But just so you know, we're aware of the situation and it's being tracked by our police chief, and EMS will be talking about it in July, so.
Thanks. Okay, on to the re- oh, two.
Sorry, there was just one more thing. Southeast Minnesota League will have their summer meeting June 29th in Blooming Prairie. There should be a link sent to the city for sign up.
Yeah, and I'll forward that out. Yeah, if you're interested, also the league conference. So yep, those are both coming up. Obviously Blooming Prairie's a little closer than Duluth, so.
Yes.
All right. I'll make sure that gets forwarded out.
Okay. Thank you. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the REFOs presentation. It's all yours.
Can you tell me how long I have? Are you getting done?
Six minutes.
I figured.
No. I guess, yeah, let's do a half hour.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And then everybody make sure they pay really close attention to our questions. And this is just from our conversation yesterday. We did this at EDA yesterday. She's going to ask us to think as city council people.
Yes, you keep talking while I hang outside. That's perfect.
No, but you're hired. It got, it got really muddled yesterday because we all live in town. Some of this own buildings on Main Street, some businesses on Main Street, and a lot of opinions were being thrown out that weren't from the perspective of an EDA member. So just if we can keep in mind that as an elected official of Casper, this is how we're answering the questions.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Emily Karash-Kasey. I am the Community Programs Director at REFOs. We are working with Casper on a downtown assessment. You might have heard of business assessments or tourism assessments or very specific types of assessments, but as the coordinating entity for the Main Street program in Minnesota, we are coming in and we are looking at your downtown as a whole. The people, the places, the streets, the businesses, you name it, it's all included in what we're looking at. We were able to make this happen through a grant from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. They funded us to do three downtown assessments in Southern Minnesota. This is the first time we did an open call for downtown assessments. We usually do it as a fee-for-service work. We had 14 applications this first time, and of those 14, three communities were selected: Casper, Montgomery, and Lake City. So you're the first of the three up for community engagement this week, and I'm just so pleased to be here. I have been here, I was all day yesterday, all day today, and I've had a chance to work with some focus groups, pop in at businesses all over downtown and adjacent to downtown, and got to know your community a little bit, and I'm really glad I have had the opportunity. So before I dive into asking you questions, I want to just, I'm going to talk fast, so please feel free to interrupt me with questions, but I want to make sure to give you some background because as city councilors, I think it's something you may end up getting questions about from the public. We want to make sure you're informed. So first of all, REFOs is a nonprofit. We work statewide for the preservation of old buildings and communities. So we do a lot of different types of work through a variety of programs. Our community programs works in greater Minnesota, primarily focusing on the Main Street program, which is part of a national network. Our education program does continuing education for realtors as well as DIY classes for homeowners of old homes. Our real estate department focuses on historic tax credit holdings as well as preservation easements and working with folks who are redeveloping old buildings. And our policy department is obviously kind of going a little crazy with the historic tax credit being tied up in the omnibus bill right now, but also does a lot of work in helping local communities to look at their local ordinances around preservation practices. So a downtown assessment helps us help you look at how to make your downtown more vibrant. And we're not always talking about how much do you need to spend to redevelop your downtown to make it a more vibrant place. We try to offer solutions that could be truly volunteer efforts as well as maybe providing some ideas that would require some investment down the road. But we help to define the thing that makes your town yours. Casper isn't like any other town. Byron is different than what you have. Manorville is different than what you have. How can we help you identify what's special and unique about downtown Casper? So just a little bit of math on how this process works. So we've been working with a stakeholder group for the past couple of months, planning for community engagement. I am here, we're at the community engagement piece. There will also be an online survey that hopefully you will all see, and then you will all share with your friends, your neighbors, your parents, your kids, people you like, people you don't like. Send it to everybody. We really truly want a wide berth of who lives and works in Casper. And really truly, we get some of the best answers from like those five-year-old kids who have really good ideas for your downtown. So if you know kids, send them the survey. So the REFOs team then takes all of the data we've gathered from in-person visits as well as the online survey, as well as specific one-on-one meetings we'll have with folks in your community. Zoom and phone calls tend to be what we do that most with now since it's hard to schedule everything while we're here. We identify your cultural assets, the things that are really working well in your community, those advantages that you already have, things that are already, the ball is rolling on those efforts. We then, with those assets in mind, offer four or five strategies for revitalization. We give you resources to help make those happen. It comes in about a 10-page little packet that we give to you and then do a public presentation on. It'll be sometime this fall. Typically, it's a faster turnaround, but working on three communities simultaneously slows us down a little bit. So it'll be September or October when we will come back. But we provide examples, resources, other places, and contacts that you can call out for some of those ideas that we offer for your community. And then it's up to you to decide what you want to enact or not enact. A big portion of the Main Street program is making sure that the ideas and the power of change is in the hands of the residents, recognizing that people who live and work in communities are the people who communities should be built for, not necessarily around tourism, not necessarily around people who aren't there yet or used to be there, but focusing on who is here right now. I'm going to skip through a lot of these things because I want to have more time talking to you. So just to remind you of the final projects, products that you'll get, you'll get that 10-page packet that'll be available to you, to city staff, economic development committee, downtown folks. It'll be available for everyone. We'll give you some limited guided implementation, which is just making sure that you understand everything that we've given you, know how to access the resources. You will get all of the data that we've gathered. So all of the feedback and answers that we've collected in person and online, we will give all of that to you. We also did a building business count. We'll do an apartment count, just some general basic numbers and how it might compare to some other communities. We'll give that to you as well. And if you wish, we will do a public community presentation. Sometimes communities want that, sometimes they don't, but it's totally up to you. Any questions before I start asking you questions? Okay. Great. I'm going to just go around the circle, and those of you who answered yesterday, you can give me the same word or a different word. I probably don't remember what you said yesterday. So if you're here already, just bear with me and do it again. I'm going to be multitasking and asking questions and writing at the same time. So when you think of downtown Casper, and when I say downtown, it's Main Street as well as those side streets about a block north of Main Street, and not just Main Street itself, what word pops into your mind first? And this doesn't have to be a nice word. It doesn't have to be the Minnesota-y answer. It's truly that first word that pops into your brain.
Let's start with Ryan over here.
Cool, I'm just going to go down the line.
I'm going to hotkey mine.
You can handle it.
Outdated.
Outdated, okay. If you don't mind just going down the line while I'm writing, I'd love that.
Potential.
Potential.
You going to answer?
You betcha, Brandon.
Average. You love that word.
I'm going to answer it.
Got to sort this out for that one.
I want to see you try to spell it.
Clustered.
Clustered.
Ooh, that's a good one. No F at the end. Limited.
Why don't you still go with lost?
That is one question that we also asked in the online survey, and we have a great tool that we are able to use that helps identify feelings of words into positive, neutral, and negative, and you can get an overall, how do people react and feel about your community? So that's what we use that one for. Okay. Oh my gosh, I'm doing too many things. When you think about downtown, what's working right now? What people are being really great leaders in the downtown district? What businesses or nonprofits or events or maybe city ordinances? What things are going well? What's working?
Literacy.
And just go ahead, call them out.
The shop local.
Movie theater being revitalized.
Couple of our businesses have been revitalized.
American Legion.
Yeah, the state of Legion.
Can you specifically name the other businesses?
The tattoo shop.
Great.
And the old video store.
Building, boy, they did a good job with that one, didn't they? Jeez.
The video, well, the video store slash.
Yeah.
That was Dance Studio, but yeah, that's being revitalized as well.
Sure.
Dance studio, not video store.
It used to be a video store and a pharmacy.
I got to walk in there today. It was amazing. All right. Anything else that comes to your minds of people, say, just things that are going really well in downtown?
We have some committed leaders.
Yeah, let's call them out. What's that? Let's call them out. Like, are there specific people that we can identify?
Well, the Chamber. I think they're trying, they're doing a better job now than they have in the past.
You know, without being specific, we have a couple of, you know, business owners that are just really pro Casper, and it's great to have those few. Just need them all on the same ship.
Got it.
Yeah, they get community involvement at Christmas time, and in the summertime, they went doing projects. That's trying to get attention to it.
Great. If something comes into your head and we've moved on, go ahead, we can go backwards. All right, what's next?
Grocery's missing from there, isn't it?
So what's the best part? And I want you to really keep your council hat on right now or your city staff hat on. What's the best part about working with downtown Casper?
Walkability.
What else?
Density. Yeah. The business improvements, I mean, I think that's.
Business improvements, is that what you said?
Yeah. They're using city, they're doing things on their own, but they're also using city projects or funding to revitalize.
Under your what works, we don't have our grocery store listed.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's a big one.
Is that on?
Yeah, it's on that second block.
Yeah, I've counted in there. It's in your downtown. Yeah, you have, you still have things here than a lot of other towns. There are very just that, still a pharmacy, still a hardware store, still a grocery store.
Coffee shop.
Coffee shop. And then, yeah, any coffee shops?
Several.
Yes, yeah.
All right. Any other comments on what's the best part about working with the downtown as a council member or city staff?
Friendly.
Okay. Oh, I'm, this is disordered. Okay. One, we're still going to do this. Ignore the screen. Can you all just pretend that it's not there? Okay. What's missing in downtown? And this is one where I'm going to go down each of, each one of you again to get an answer. The one thing, the one type of business, the one type of place, it can be a feeling, it can be an emotion. What's missing in downtown? I'll start over here because we can surprise everybody.
Can I say four of them?
Yes.
Retail, restaurants, arts, and it doesn't mean it has to go against the best part, but I think we have a lack of walkability and access for people trying to cross the street down there. So it might be cam one side, but it's difficult for people to.
Great. And it's, one of your pieces has already been said. Say it again, and we'll just add tally marks. Yeah.
I think there's parking is missing.
Okay. Can you be more specific when you say parking?
Parking lots.
Okay.
You know, we need more, to attract the business, you need the parking lot, I think, as a.
Thank you.
I would have to go with the retail. We are struggling to competing with the Walmarts and the Targets and.
Yeah. Specialty, like a cake bakery, cupcake place or specialty store. I drive to Plainview for their cupcakes.
You have Tim.
Oh, they got to pass me, I'm sure.
Oh, no.
No, it's actually right up to you. Your time is perfect.
Oh, come on, that's not fair. I was hoping to miss it. Well, she already said restaurants, and I think that was the one I came up with yesterday, so.
We're missing individuals willing to take a chance to do any of those things.
Wow.
Those things are all great.
Like entrepreneurs.
Entrepreneurs. If you don't have people willing to take the chance and work and buy an old building and live in it for three years, you aren't going to have any of those things.
Bike shop.
Yes, those of you who are out here, feel free to chime in too. Bike shop.
For all these trails.
I'd say maybe a community gathering place. Both, I mean, just a spot that the community can say, yeah, we have this downtown, and it's, you know, our spot, and that'll garner more, more work. What was that?
Nothing.
Oh, I think I know. I mean, you could have like outdoor movies and whatnot downtown, and maybe just draw people in there.
Yeah.
Retail, restaurant. I mean, we, we have, but.
Yeah. This is, that's one we form more and more.
I have a young kid, and we walked down just last week, and there's a lack of kid-type stores. You think back to when I was a kid, 30 years ago, we had a baseball card shop, you had the variety store. It watches you go get candy or buy candy. And we're just, we're missing some of that.
I think, yeah.
One way or the other.
Yeah.
Okay. We're sticking with the like kind of negative side for just a little bit, and then we'll move forward. One thing we find when we're working with downtown is there's often a sense of loss and grief over things that have left, you know, five, 10, even 50 years ago, that stay in people's memories, that makes it really hard to move forward. Sometimes it's hard to move forward because maybe a business closed, but that person still owns the building and it's not being told. Or maybe there was a fire, and there's an empty space, and there hasn't been development on it. What is something that you can think of or that you hear a lot about that people have lost in downtown? Again, it can be a place, it can be a person, it can be a feeling that really stands out to you.
Daniel?
Car dealerships.
Yeah, I came up yesterday as Luthold, the building, so.
Yeah, there was three separate stores. There was a women's store, a men's store, and a shoe store.
Didn't, you know, downtown Casper had four car dealerships.
And this place, Magnolia. Yeah.
Yeah.
Downtown City Hall. Easy access for people.
Stoplight.
I'm going to ride through downtown too.
Did I hear somebody say stoplight? Because you would not be the first one who said that today. I'm writing it down.
Well, it's not out yet, but it will be, so. In a year.
No, 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 again. Sorry, somebody else said something too.
Library, at least be downtown.
Library. That is a pretty cool building, though. All right.
Something that may be way off base is space. We've got space, but we don't have space.
Well, I mean, you've got some empty lots now.
Yeah.
They used to be.
But we've got, we're landlocked with the old images building and the lumberyard.
Railroad.
Yeah, and the railroad. Yeah, and the railroad, so it's a dichotomy.
Yeah, that makes sense. Anything else, please, that you folks talked about recent, long ago? Okay, moving forward, okay, we're gonna add a couple, I didn't have you update my slide deck, so I have a couple more questions. What is something that you are the most proud of in downtown, that council has done or taken action on? What is something that really jumps out at you?
Library.
The library?
Yeah.
What else? That was Mitch, twenty teens, is that when that happened?
It moved?
Two years ago?
Five.
Twenty fifteen, I think, started to move over.
Great.
Most proud of downtown, boy.
The facade improvement program, as far as if we're thinking as city officials, that's been taken advantage of by several businesses downtown.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the proactive approach that City Council's taken on some of its own facilities downtown, for example, whether it happens or not, we're looking at a fire hall project that would be an improvement on that street potentially, and also the liquor store is being looked at for remodeling, so those would both be kind of welcoming to the downtown and somewhat attractive.
I wouldn't even say the Highway Fifty-Seven project, just a beautification of that.
It's part of that, so...
What else? Okay, moving ahead, what about downtown gives you the most pause or concern? What is the one thing, again, person, place, feeling, that makes you the most concerned for downtown?
Long-term viability.
Okay. What else? It's okay, you can be really honest.
The fire risk.
Okay.
I think the attraction, trying to get, pull people off the highway to want to visit or talk to them.
Losing it as a destination. More people leaving town to do whatever it is that they're presently doing downtown.
All right, taking some notes. What else?
Just the movement of established businesses over time.
Hmm.
They all grow their space.
Which is a good problem, but a bad problem.
Can be, because we'd always get to keep them then. I mean, Culligan's is a good example, that's off of downtown, but it's in the... Daniels, Hardware Hank, there's so many businesses that have left, and they're still in town, but they're not as easy to access for people, because they're not on the one location.
Just, you know, like take the hardware store, they couldn't have that hardware store where they had before, and the size they were, they couldn't, yeah, it's just one of those things, it's just change.
Yeah.
You put change on every one of those columns, it can be good, it can be bad, it can be, you know...
The other is the age of our buildings downtown.
All right, anything else anyone wants to add to the list here? Okay, so I'm going to ask this next question two times, and both times, we're looking for a slightly different answer. The first time is, if things continue as they are now, the programs that you're already doing keep going, the people who are already doing things keep doing them, where is downtown Cassin in five years? If nothing else changes, but things keep continuing as they are.
Same. Yeah, the same.
The same, yeah.
There'd still be changing. I see improvements, because I think, if you take the macro-environmental climate of high inflation and high cost of gasoline, I think you would see more interest in people who are in town and shopping in town, as opposed to always going to Rochester if gas is six dollars a gallon. I mean, realistically, I know, I've been walking a heck of a lot more, and I probably would have been, it's been good for everybody.
But part of that too, though, I mean, if they're in town for work, they're gonna do more, and then they're gonna stay, it's gonna, it could pull away from that too.
I see that the current buildings we have, if we keep going, they're gonna, will be full, but there won't be any construction of new buildings, if things stay the same, to fill in those empty lots.
How many years have those been empty?
Luthold's ones, you mean?
Anything else, anyone wants to add to this conversation?
Three years ago, Magnolia. Your aging buildings aren't going to get younger. Was that right? Aging buildings aren't going to get younger, the outsides of them, if you leave it the way they are, aren't going to attract new business, if you leave them as is.
I think we'll have gems on a sandy beach, we'll have a couple buildings that'll shine, but the rest of it will be dilapidated, aged.
I like that analogy, thank you. Okay, now, you all have a magic wand, all the money exists for all the things, everything happens the way it needs to, people are doing the things, magic, five years from now, what does downtown look like? Again, feelings are very welcome as a idea we can put on the list.
The one I mentioned yesterday, I'm gonna change it a little bit today, it'll be a WHKS-sponsored street project. I'm just gonna do it for free, all the engineering, just because I love Cassin.
Because that's what magic wand really works.
Streetscaping, like a streetscaping street project, if it was, if I could wave my hand and say, hey, we're gonna make this more attractive.
Yeah, that's what this comes for, perfect.
More modernized buildings.
Yeah. The one thing I've mentioned in the chamber is, we've got a consistent theme for downtown.
Can I go back to your modernized building comment? Can you clarify what you mean by modern for me?
Updated, renovated.
What about mixed-use?
Mixed-use, yeah.
I think mixed-use would be something, I think if I could wave a wand, I'd say, hey, make all the apartments that are above those units usable, because you'd increase your population that actually lives downtown, which would be kind of interesting.
I think it's warm and welcoming.
I think of Red Wing, they've done a lot of updating to their downtown, not all the buildings look the same, they're not modern, but they're updated, and they're usable long-term.
Yep.
So looking at one side of the street, what side of the street would be one we want to focus on over the next five years? Both might be a stretch, but focus on one side and work on that.
Mm-hmm, maybe that, I like that.
Maybe not as, maybe not as magic, but I mean, I'd love to see off-street parking, which enables us to eliminate angle, angle parking, because it would give us the, at least the illusion of space.
And would enable you to cross the street without...
Be able to see without getting hit, yes.
Yeah, encompass some of that with a streetscape and bump out, so you can get it now.
Good point. More of a destination, like it used to be. People used to come from Rochester, come to Luthold's, and to Daniels, and...
Any other pieces that you want to add back up?
Thriving brewery.
We're gonna have one, so...
Oh, I know, I mean, yesterday was his last day of teaching, so...
Forever.
Fanatism.
Trailer side block system connecting to the newer downtown, or downtown. Where's the newer downtown? Like this area, old ShopCo. Quick Trip.
Downtown South.
Brewery.
Yeah.
Brandon's doing that already, right, Brandon? With Fifty-Seven, we're gonna hook right in.
Not with the trail, but we talked about the ShopCo, and then we talked about going south down to like Quick Trip, but trying to go that all the way out.
Anything else anyone wants to include? This is by no means the end of the conversation, we really are hopeful that you will make sure to take our survey when it comes out, and take it as you, your own self personally, you don't have to wear any hat of any volunteer or job, just you, a person who lives in Cassin. Thank you so much for sharing some time, I know it was a longer meeting because of it, but we are really excited to give you some strategies and some ideas. We think your downtown is great, I am really excited about the people who are already starting to do some investments in those buildings, it's pretty exciting. Awesome, any other questions for me?
What's your timeframe, Emily? Maybe you could talk about your steps and that sort of thing.
Sure, so, the online survey, I'll get it to Robert by the end of this week, you'll choose your dates of how long you would like it to be open, we don't recommend that it is open for more than two or three weeks, any longer than that, and folks just get a little bit dismissive, so the shorter the timeframe, the better responses we actually get. We usually take a couple months to comb through the information, it takes us about that long. We get between seven to ten percent of a population typically responding to the downtown surveys, which is pretty good for a survey like this. So, our hope is to have our dates set to come back and give you our recommendations September or October.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, and feel free to reach out with any questions, or if you have any other questions about RESOCE, check out our website, you can find how to reach me there. Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Were adjourned, thank you.